Let's get started. Good evening and welcome to the City of Topeka Planning Commission Meeting. We are commissioned appointed by the mayor and city council to plan for the orderly growth and development of the community, to hold public hearings, and to make recommendations to the city council on planning items. Please note that the city council rules state that the public hearings for planning cases shall be conducted solely by the Planning Commission. No additional public hearings will be conducted by the city council. Tonight's cases are tentatively scheduled to be heard by the city council next month. The agendas can be found at topeka.org. Tonight's cases may, uh, will involve public hearings. For those cases, the procedure will be as follows. First, the Planning Department staff will summarize the case. Next, we will hear from the applicant or the representative. Then we will receive public testimony. Public comments should be addressed solely to the chair and are limited to four minutes. Chris, please take role.
Mr. Armstrong? Mr. Beck?
Here.
Ms. Cavazos?
Here.
Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mr. Hall? Ms. Jordan?
Here.
Mr. Canar?
Here.
Ms. Ringler?
Here.
Mr. Woods. We have six in a quorum.
Excellent, thank you. All right. Item B, approval of minutes from March 21st. Staff have had time to, uh, or excuse me, members of the commission have had time to review the minutes. Any corrections or comments for staff? Seeing none, is there a motion? Mr. Beck?
Move to approve the minutes.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
And a second. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. Chris, would you please take role?
Mr. Beck?
Aye.
Ms. Cavazos?
Aye.
Mr. Gales?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Canar?
Aye.
Ms. Ringler?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Excellent, thank you. All right, we'll move along here. Mr. Feindler, communications to the commission.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. There's one main communication. We have an item on tonight's agenda that was published. Uh, it's, it's under E2. That has been withdrawn. Uh, that is the, uh, by Heartland Management, um, and First Assembly of God, uh, for the expansion of the, uh, O-N-I, change of R1 to O-N-I2 at, um, 520 Southwest 27th Street, and a portion of 500 Southwest 27th. So that, that, if anybody's here tonight for that item, just want to make sure we were able to get notices out late last week. Not sure if all the residents had notified, uh, got notices, uh, but the applicant, as I said, uh, for the newcomer funeral group, application did withdraw the, the rezoning request, and their intent is to come back in the next few months with a, with a planned unit development, or PUD, to, uh, propose a, a more specific, uh, design and, uh, plan for what they want to do.
Okay. Super. So for clarification again, um, item E2, the one regarding Heartland Management Company First Assembly God, is not on the agenda this evening, so we'll hear it at a later date with probably a, a review or revision, so, okay?
That, that is correct.
Any other items?
We will certainly know more whenever we get, um, a new application. We would notify the neighborhood and have a whole nother process, go through a whole new, uh, review. And, um, so we, we would assume that's, in the next few months, we might, we might see something. So, other than that, that's all I have to, to share.
Oh, super. Our phones working?
Good.
So I would add that anyone, anyone that is here for that, uh, event, you're still welcome to stay. There's obviously nothing more exciting to do in town than to hang around for, uh, entertaining the evening at the Planning Commission meeting, so, um, Mr. Woods has joined us, so we will have seven now. Okay? All right. So with the communications addressed, uh, we'll move to item D, Declaration of Conflict of Interest or Expartee Communications. Uh, any of the members of the commission or staff wish to, uh, make any? Yes, Mr. Beck?
I will be excusing myself from the E3 item.
Okay.
And with your permission, sir, being the last item on the agenda, I may not make it back for adjournment, if that's okay?
All right. Well, it sounds like we'll have someone here taking minutes, so we won't need you.
Very good.
Super.
Since I am on your staff.
Yeah. All right. I would note also, regarding communications, I was contacted earlier this year, I think it was around, um, January, late January, early February, and was asked to look at some accessibility issues on this, this lot, uh, that we're dealing with. With item E, uh, was not under contract. I simply visited the site, made a couple of observations, and was not contracted or paid for anything, so, um, anyway, I just want to make clear that I have visited the site and had talked with the owner, but it was, uh, some time before their application, so, anyway. Any further, um, communications or observation? All right, seeing none, uh, we will move along then. We'll start with the public hearings. Item E1. Mr. Hall?
Thank you. CU163 is for a conditional use permit to allow the owner to operate a daycare on the property. It's really a preschool, but it, it has the same characteristics as a daycare center, and, and we treat it as such in the, in the zoning ordinance. The preschool will be licensed for a maximum of 12 preschool-aged children, ages three to five, and two full-time staff. Preschool will be operated in the building on the north side of the site. The building on the south side of the site has and may continue to be operated for religious assembly, also known as a church. Uh, as you can see from the aerial photo, aerial map, uh, the property is located at the corner of 19th and Fillmore. The area around, uh, it, mainly on the north, west, and south, is predominantly single-family residential in use. Uh, as you go to the east, it transitions to a more industrial or semi-industrial character. Uh, the air, the property on the, um, it'd be the southeast corner of 19th and Fillmore is the water distribution center, uh, by the City of Topeka. They don't actually distribute water out of that building. Uh, it's, it's really an office and kind of a service center for, for, uh, the utilities, uh, department. Um, to the west, or excuse me, to the east of that is the Kansas Expo Center. Uh, the long, narrow row of buildings there along the, along western, uh, as I understand it, that's the livestock facility, all interior, if I understand it, but that is the, the dome or livestock, uh, facility as part of the Expo Center. The property is owned R1 for single-family residential uses. The proposed preschool is classified as a daycare facility type 2, and requires conditional use permit in the R1 zoning district. Character of the neighborhood is residential. I've already gone over that, actually. Um, won't go on, on, on that anymore. Uh, parking for the preschool is provided off of the alley on the back, and although on-street parking is also available. Drop-off and pickup of children will be and is limited to the west side of Fillmore Street, Fillmore Street, excuse me. For the reasons noted in the staff report, staff is recommending approval of a conditional use permit subject to several conditions. I'll just make note of two of these conditions. Condition number four requires the applicant to surface at least four parking stalls off the alley to comply with city standards within one year. There is parking back there now, but it's in a gravel surface, and, uh, it, it needs to be improved within one year. Uh, that's what staff's recommending anyhow. Condition number five would limit drop-off and pickup on the west side of Fillmore Street. That's a recommendation coming from the city's traffic engineer. Uh, with that, again, we're recommending approval, and, uh, we find that this is a, an appropriate use of an existing non-residential building, and it'll, it'll provide some impetus to maintain that, that property, and it's a good use for that property, in staff's opinion. And with that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Fellow members of the commission, any questions for Mr. Hall?
I have a question.
Yes?
Uh, Mr. Hall, how would the, the parking be enforced? Will there be signage, or will it just be up to the, the applicant to inform parents? Or what would happen if someone started parking on the other side of the street and it became a problem?
I think that's really up to the applicant to do that. We always have the option, if someone is not complying with the conditions of a conditional use permit, to, uh, report to the Planning Commission, and a conditional use permit can be revoked if someone is not meeting the conditions. But that's primarily going to be enforced by the applicant.
Thank you.
Mr. Hall, I did have one question. Sorry, Mr. Beck. I noted, uh, in here that you are limiting the number of, um, participants in the daycare to 12, and I did not, uh, have the time to verify kind of how the code reads that. Is that the standard, um, limited number, um, in a case like this, or, or normally, is there more that are allowed to attend the daycare?
Bill might know the answer to this question, but, um, I believe that, that it's not specific in limiting the number. If they wanted to go over that, they could, they could come back and apply for more if they wanted to.
Okay. And with that application, there would be other criteria that might be considered, or, I guess what I want to clarify is that, uh, yeah, there are probably some justification for the application of 12, and I realize the state has some criteria too, so, I didn't know if, uh, because I had not been able to confirm anything in the code, if, if there was a city ordinance limitation in that use.
Not, not directly. I think it's limited by parking, available parking.
Okay.
I imagine there are thresholds in licensing for the state.
Okay.
And, uh, certainly...
So all of those would have to be in effect before it would ever get to you?
Through building and fire. Through building and fire code, they would have to make sure that the, the building is, is fit for the occupancy level.
Okay.
And the applicant is here, and so they might be able to answer some of those questions.
Mr. Beck, you had a question for Mr. Hall?
I did have one question for Mr. Hall. Regarding the four stalls, just want to make sure, clarification on that, that one of those stalls at least would be ADA compliant?
That is correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
As well as the accessible aisle to go along with this?
Yes.
So, reality is probably a five stall with, uh, to get that accessible aisle in there as well.
Correct.
Just clarification.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Hall or staff? All right, seeing none, we'll ask that a representative of the owner, or the owner, please step forward. Uh, if you have any comments or would be available for any questions? Sir, and for the record, if you would just simply introduce yourself and your address, so that staff can record that?
Sure. Absolutely. Uh, my name is Dr. Eric Patterson. My wife, Melissa Patterson, and, uh, the address of the property is 1833, uh, Southwest Fillmore Street.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, uh, any comments for the commission, or are you simply standing for questions?
No, uh, just, uh, have a few brief comments. Um, I know that, uh, myself and my wife are very excited about the opportunity to provide childcare services. It's been our goal to make sure that there are opportunities for, uh, quality childcare programs, uh, within the city. Have quite a history of providing childcare, and I'll let my wife tell just a little bit about the background. She's a, been the primary.
Well, yes, I've provided care for 20 years. We currently operate at 23rd and Wisconsin, and we're right in the middle of a neighborhood, um, just like this one. Um, to answer your question regarding the 12 children, um, 12 children, one, it's licenseings. You know, with the square footage of the building, we wouldn't go above 12 children. Um, also, it's a small building. When you go above 12 children, then you're looking at sprinkler systems and stuff like that, but, um, for the two people that are going to be there teaching, um, the, uh, 12 children, um, would be our max for that location, so the children can get that undivided attention that they need.
Okay, excellent. Any questions for the owners? Thank you, Mr. and Ms. Patterson. Appreciate it. Thank you. At this time, we're going to open the, um, floor up for public comments. If you wish to speak regarding this particular matter, please, uh, step forward at this time. Um, there is a limit of four minutes. We do ask that when you step forward, you introduce yourself and list your address. So, with that, anyone that wishes to speak, please do so. This is going to go quick. Super. All right, with that, we'll close the public comments section of this item. Fellow commissioners, any further discussion? Any other, uh, questions of the staff? Well, at this point, I'll entertain a motion, or a motion. Mr. Beck?
I have a motion to approve, based on the staff recommendations as listed.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Thank you, Mr. Woods. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's take role. Chris, please.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Ms. Ringler?
Aye.
Mr. Canar?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Gales?
Aye.
Ms. Cavazos?
Aye.
Mr. Beck?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, let's move ahead. Mr. Beck, have a good evening. Let's move ahead to item E3. Mr. Hall?
Thank you. Uh, CU164 is for a conditional use permit for an outdoor music concert facility with a stage and assembly area. The outdoor concert facility is, is in a, classified as an outdoor recreation facility type 3, and therefore requires conditional use permit in this zoning district, which is C4 commercial.
What we think of your...
Okay, that's the screen I was looking for. As you can see in the aerial photo, the property is located, uh, just south of US 24 Highway on North Kansas Avenue. There's an auto body shop adjacent and on the south side of the property, and there's a retail showroom and office for a home remodeling store on the north side of the property. Uh, to the west, on the west side of the property is, is, uh, retail, and there's some vacant land as well. Uh, the, the land immediately east of the property is vacant, although there are residences to the south, front on Lyman Road. B&amp;B Backyard is a business that started in kind of a modest way, as I understand, and it grew as a result of its success. It was very popular, uh, became a popular attraction, and, uh, for various reasons, at some point, it was discovered that, uh, they had not gotten all the approvals they needed to from the city, and that's, uh, how we ended up here today. As proposed, B&amp;B Backyard will operate, uh, up to the months of April through September, uh, three nights a week on the weekends. The original proposal was to operate as late as 1:00 AM. We had some discussion, 1:00 AM in the morning, uh, we had some discussion about, uh, ratcheting that back, and, and, uh, the plan that's in your packet, uh, shows that it would operate up until 12:00 AM. However, after a closer look at the, at the city's regulations, um, the noise ordinance limits operation to, to 11:00 PM, um, unless there's an exception granted by the city council, uh, per the procedure in the noise ordinance. Zoning map, um, as you can see from the zoning map, property is owned C4. It's surrounded by, uh, other properties that are C4 commercial. C4 commercial is, I would say, is probably our most, um, our least restrictive, most intense, uh, commercial district, uh, before you get into industrial zoning and that kind of thing. It allows for things like outdoor storage and, and, uh, outdoor display of merchandise and that type of thing. It's typically, you'll find it along, uh, major arterials and, and close to highways where there's a lot of good traffic access. Uh, the land to the south and southeast is owned R1, single-family residential, um, as you can see on the map there. As you, the key issues with the conditional use application are mainly related to the parking and the potential impact of, from the noise, um, from the amplified music that's part of the concert facility. I'm not sure which is easiest to see this, but, um, at the front third of the property is Bill's Diner. Uh, it's a, it's a restaurant that operates mainly during the day. I think it's mainly a lunch-type restaurant. The concert facility is not really directly related to Bill's Diner. It's really a independently operated, uh, use, um, although it's operated by the same owner, um, O'Brady and Lee Browning. Um, the, the concert facility is really at the back third of the property. Might be kind of hard to see it there, but here's the, that slide shows the, uh, site plan. It's a little fuzzy on the screen, on the slide, but the back third is where the event facility is. It's an assembly area, uh, place for people to stand, bring their lawn chairs and sit in lawn chairs. They set up a tent, uh, and, uh, there's a stage and also a, a small dance floor. Uh, the area in the middle is, is event parking for the facility. One of the, uh, issues that was discussed early on was whether this had, had to be paved and, uh, paved in asphalt or concrete. The, the ordinance does not specifically require that it be paved in asphalt or concrete. That is customarily the surface used for a parking lot. However, this being a, a seasonal event facility, uh, it's staff's opinion, it's, it's appropriate that it be, you know, in a gravel surface as long as, you know, dust is controlled and, and it's, it's maintained and, uh, it, it's kept from getting ruts and pits and that kind of thing. Um, it's, it is important, however, that there be, uh, access for, for fire and emergency vehicles, and that access has to be sufficient to, uh, have a capacity for a 75,000-pound fire apparatus, um, large fire truck essentially, and that access has to provide access, uh, to within 150 feet of every part of a building on the property. Uh, one thing that might not be clear on this site plan is, uh, in the upper, be the upper-right corner, uh, adjoining the, the north property line, there's a building, kind of a small building, and the stage is actually along the south property line. So, I, as I mentioned, one of the issues is parking. The assembly area is actually large enough to accommodate probably more than 1,000 patrons. Um, however, by law, occupancy is going to be limited to what the fire code will allow, and by the parking they can provide for the occupants, for the patrons, essentially. If occupancy is limited to the parking available on-site, based on how much they have on-site, uh, typically the 68 spaces, after you, uh, account for ADA parking, accessible parking, they will be limited to 272 patrons based on that parking loan. However, in the C4 district, there are few, if any, restrictions to parking off-site. They have, and they plan to continue, uh, allowing for parking for their patrons off-site. Uh, they have, as they've described it to me, uh, they have good relationships with other property owners, uh, and, uh, they do not have a problem allowing their patrons to park on their properties. Uh, they, they don't have any written agreements with other property owners at this time, as I understand, but that's something that, uh, we'd want to, want to see at some point. Terms of noise, I mentioned earlier, the noise ordinance, as it relates to this proposed use, is summarized in the staff report. Uh, essentially, use of amplified, amplified sound, loud enough to be heard from more than 50 feet from the premises, is prohibited between the hours of 11:00 AM and 7, 11:00 PM and 11, and 7:00 AM. On a request by the operator, city council may consider and grant an exception to the 11:00 PM limit for specific event dates of a range of dates. Um, the, the Planning Commission does not have the authority to, to grant that exception, and that exception's not, it doesn't go through the planning department, goes through the city clerk, uh, for consideration. Just want to point out that, uh, and this is also noted in the staff report, the city really has received very few complaints about B&amp;B Backyard. It's, it's, which is, might be kind of surprising because they do play loud music, um, but, uh, very few complaints. Police department's records indicate virtually no criminal or other bad incidents resulting from B&amp;B Backyard. By almost all accounts, B&amp;B Backyard has been an asset to the community. Uh, a lot of people like it. It's, it's a good atmosphere, um, and hasn't really created a negative impact. It's also important that the use meets the city's standards, uh, mainly those that directly affect life safety. This means that buildings need to meet construction codes, ensuring the safety of occupants, and that the entire facility needs to have proper access for emergency response. For the reasons cited in the staff report and what I've just described, uh, staff is recommending approval subject to several conditions to ensure compliance with city code, including requirements to obtain proper permits for buildings, site improvements including those pertaining to fire and emergency response access, and, uh, there are conditions that relate to, uh, the noise ordinance and compliance with the noise ordinance. There are several other conditions in there. They're in the staff report. Be happy to answer any questions about those, but, uh, again, uh, staff's recommending approval subject to those conditions. Uh, the applicant's certainly here, and they can address you and answer questions as well. And, uh, with that, any questions you might have?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hall. Fellow commissioners, any questions of staff? Okay, at this time, I don't have any questions, so we will go ahead and invite the owner's representative to step forward.
My name is Mark Boyd. I'm with SBB Engineering, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Browning and Mr. Brady. I think, uh, Mr. Hall did a good job summarizing what's taken place, uh, on this property over the last couple of years and how we got to this point. I guess I'd, I'd like to just make a public comment of thanking and the amount of appreciation that they put into this to get where we are today. I'm kind of a latecomer into this process. There was a lot of meetings, I understand, that took place before they ever called in us to, to help them through the conditional use permit process. A lot of discussions went on with planning and staff, uh, the fire marshal and his staff and development services, and, uh, you know, even, even to this later date, as last week, there was discussions going on, and, and there, I'd like to apologize for the condition of the plan that we've got in front of you tonight. It just kind of seemed futile there a couple of weeks ago to try to keep up with all the back and forth that was going on, so, you know, we plan on updating the, the site plan to something a little bit more presentable, uh, which normally our, our operation procedure. I think we're, we're agreeable to nearly all the conditions to be met. There's a couple of things that I'd like to bring up for discussion, maybe some clarification on. One of them zeroes in around the, uh, sound amplification, and, you know... One of them zeroes in around the sound amplification and, you know, I understand that the planning commission doesn't have this authority to, excuse me, to grant an exception, but I would like a clarification on who does. You know, does the, can a conditional use permit be granted a, an extension? Is it something that has to be done on a individual basis? Can the city council, does the city council have authority of that?
I'm going to defer to Ms. Fanny on this, please.
I can respond to that question. The condition in the CUP is simply that the owner comply with the noise ordinance and that requirement applies to anybody in the city of Topeka. The definition, the noise ordinance is rather nuanced. In other words, if the music continues past 11:00 PM, that doesn't mean that the owner has violated the noise ordinance. Someone could call, it would require someone to call and make a complaint and then it would be up to the city prosecutor to determine whether the music, the amplified sound disturbed the peace of a reasonable person. So somebody who's extremely sensitive to noise, that's probably not going to apply to them. I guess my point is that the fact that there's no requirement that the music stop at 11:00 PM, but I think we wanted the applicant to know that the noise ordinance was there and it's possible that if someone is bothered by the noise, they could make a complaint to the police and then it would go through the municipal court system. Does that kind of satisfy?
Yeah, thank you for the clarification. I guess I would respond back as saying, okay, where does that leave us with this plan? Can we, can we leave the midnight operating limits on there? Because I see a distinction here between people being on-site and operating till midnight as opposed to a nuisance noise at 11 o'clock.
Well, the, the condition is, the condition that amplified sound is limited to 7 to 12 PM. That's being removed, that note. And the note simply says that use of amplified sound has to comply with the noise regulations.
Okay.
So that doesn't mean that at 11 o'clock, the music has to stop.
Okay. Thank you for reminding me. This is one of those revisions that went late into the week, so I guess we removed the time limit altogether from our.
Correct.
It sounds like it simply defers to the city ordinance for the compliance.
Correct.
I'm guessing you could still have some background music and whoever was there to attend the concert can hang around till, by ordinance, they have to close.
Whatever hour.
But as long as it doesn't exceed the allowable decibel range stated in the ordinance, you know, what it may mean is that those of us that have hearing aids or probably should have them, might need to be sensitive to how late the music is after 11 o'clock.
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, keep pounding on this thing, but I guess I want to make sure I understand that there, at this point, there's no time limitation for how late they can operate the business on the weekends?
Well, there is another ordinance that requires them to get a permit if they're going to operate after midnight.
Okay.
That's called the after midnight permit and I believe they have applied for it, but the city clerk could not entertain it until we get this process figured out. So, that's the next step.
So you're satisfied with this? Okay. All right, thank you for patience. So I guess with that, we're agreeable to the conditions. I will note that Mr. Brady has given me some agreements they've secured on off-site parking. It totals in the neighborhood of 272 additional spaces, spaces on top of what's on-site. You know, at this point, I think we'll just, I don't know how you want me to handle these, if these want to be submitted as, at a later date.
Yeah, so here's how I would suggest, subject to however this would be approved, is that those be submitted to staff for acknowledgement, but assuming, we're going to work under the impression that those agreements are between the owner and the neighbors to accommodate whatever additional parking and should that not violate any other building code or whatever, I'm not going to see that as something that would impact our approval of this. I see that as simply them doing their due diligence to allow for any additional occupants. Is that, Mr. Feinder and Ms. Fanny, is that, is that kind of a reasonable approach to handle those?
If you look at, I'm sorry. I'll go ahead and respond to that, Mr. Chairman. If you look at condition 2B, it states, the last sentence of that condition states, "The applicant shall submit to the city of Topeka compliant apartment acceptable documentation of a shared parking agreement for all parking."
Okay.
So that's all they need to do is submit those to us and we'll just review them.
We'll move forward that that will be addressed extemporaneously of the, what we're doing here and that'll accommodate whatever parking that would be allowed by the agreement. Because what I wouldn't want to do is get into the process of attaching that numerical count to whatever we're doing, subject to, you know, I mean, that could change tomorrow and it could increase or decrease, so I'll let that be based on the comments made by Mr. Hall that are stated here, so.
With that, I don't have any further information unless there's some questions from the commission.
The owner has reviewed all of the staff recommendation items and outside of the two that you asked for clarification on, they're aware of the other limitations that are, are in effect, subject to their further actions, so all those are agreeable then?
They are aware and agreeable, correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Is there any questions?
Again, I would go back to the fire marshal and development services being very specific and.
That would be the firewall for any other modifications that would be made out there. They would have to comply with building codes and other items, okay? Mr. Boyd, is, do we have any questions, Mr. Boyd or the owner, the commission?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd.
Thank you for your time.
All right, at this time, we're going to open the microphone up for public comments. As we stated before, each individual that would step forward and make comments is allowed up to four minutes. We do ask that you state your name and address before you proceed with your comments. Please make all of your comments to the chair and we'll go from there. So at this time, if you wish to speak regarding this matter, please do so. Okay, seeing no one that wishes to step forward, we're going to go ahead and close the public comments section, so. Fellow commissioners, any further questions of the staff or items of discussion? I think Mr. Boyd's questions were kind of addressed by Mr. Hall and Ms. Fanny and it was kind of resolved, any clarifications I had. It sounds like the items that have been noted by Mr. Hall are pretty specific into what the owner would have to be do in order to, be doing in order to change their use from this point forward and it appears they've moved forward with the process by which compliance would occur, so. Is there any other thoughts or concerns regarding this matter? Everybody's pretty quiet tonight. Can't get my three kids to be this quiet. What's that?
Yeah, we can make something up, but.
Would you like to add something, Mr. Feinder officially?
No, I, I mean, while we're all, for the record, I think I'll second Mr. Boyd's response tonight is, I've seen and quite honestly, I've been more on the outside looking in to a lot of work that's been going on between staff, not just the planning, fire, development services and the applicants and, so I'm actually very happy with how that was going because it was, it was not always a, there was a lot of unknowns when this began and I think we tried to all get to the knowns and, and at the end, it, you know, it, the clouds lifted a little bit more and I think that helped the applicant understand what the requirements were because at the beginning, it was, it was pretty open-ended and that, that took a lot of work to get there, so I'll just, I'll just second that and also mention, we do, are the conditions that staff has recommended should cover all the issues that were brought up tonight in terms of the, that they still have to comply with, you know, staying open after midnight with clerk, city clerk license and development services building permits and fire department approval, so we're all, it's all couched in there in the, in the conditions that staff has recommended. So I think while this may move on, they still have some work to do, so.
Okay. Fellow commissioners, any further comments or questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Would you like to revise your?
Yes, I would, I would. I move that we approve the request for the conditional use permit by Donald T. Bell.
Okay. Mr. Woods has made a motion to approve this as recommended with staff comments.
I'll second.
We have a second by Ms. Jordan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, let's take a roll, Chris.
Ms. Cavazos.
Aye.
Mr. Gales.
Aye.
Ms. Jordan.
Aye.
Mr. Canar.
Aye.
Ms. Ringler.
Aye.
Mr. Woods.
Aye.
Motion passes five with one, five zero with one abstention.
Okay, thank you. That is the last of our public hearing items. We have no other items on the agenda. Mr. Feinder, do you have anything else you wish to add this evening before we adjourn?
I don't think I do. I'm a little caught off guard.
I thought I am too.
A little longer.
I think we were prepared for more, so I guess we'll defer that one to a later date, so. Excellent. With that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Woods, do you have any motions in mind?
Mr. Chair, I had a move that we adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So now, to get a standing ovation.